Pursuant to the requirements of New York, uh, the New York State Office of Community Renewal, the Village of New Paltz will conduct a public hearing to obtain the input of citizens, particularly low and moderate income persons with regards to the Small Cities Community Development Block Program. The CDBG program is administered by New York State Homes and Community Renewal Office of Community Renewal, OCR. An informational public hearing is scheduled for May 13th, 2013 at seven thirty at the New Paltz Village Hall, Large Meeting Room, 25 Platical Avenue, New Paltz, New York, on 2561. Citizens are invited to participate in the development of the, of the village's community development project, including assessing community development needs and priorities. At the hearing, the village will describe the types of grant assistance available from the New York State Office of Community Renewal, and will seek comments and suggestions from the public as to propose uses of the Community Development Block Grant Funds. The types of activities that may be undertaken with the Community Development Block Grant Funds include acquisition and disposition of real property, public facilities, and improvements; clearance activities, public services, payments of non-federal share of, of other, another federal program; removal of architectural barriers, relocation, rehabilitation, and preservation activities; economic development, and job-creating activities. Approximately 29 million in CDBG funds are available through the Consolidated Funding Application, CFA, for the public infrastructure, public facilities, economic development, small business assistance, New York, uh, New York Main Street, technical assistance, and rural area revitalization. The village will also explain, uh, the primary and national objectives of the program, the state's CDBG requirements, the process, and timeline for submitting applications through CFA, and announcement timing.
Okay, Katie. Um, Mark here, here to speak to this, so if you would.
Public hearing ad is quite a mouthful, and I'll try to explain this as simply as possible why we're here tonight having this public hearing. Uh, I'm Mark Lauer, I'm a grant writer. I work for the Village of New Paltz, I've been working for the village since 2010. I've worked lots of other places here, in Ulster County, Sullivan County, Pennsylvania, and New Jersey. I've been writing grants for the last 35 years. Uh, my work is largely related to finding funding to solve problems for communities. I'm not an attorney, and I'm not an engineer, I leave that to them. Uh, my role is to find funding and then to help the community administer it properly so as not to get in trouble with either the federal or state government because they have rules and strings attached to their money. It's a really long ad, but the point we're trying to get at here is that we have an opportunity to apply for funding this year, like we have in former years. The program we're looking at is called the Community Development Block Grant Program. It's administered by the New York State Office of Housing and Community Renewal, also known as OCR. They get about $15 million each year from the US Department of HUD. HUD gives the money to the 50 states for non-entitlement communities. Large cities like New York, Poughkeepsie, Albany, Rochester, they get an entitlement grant each year. Locally, we have an entitlement county called Orange County. They get an entitlement grant each year. They get to use the money. All they have to do is not do anything wrong. We have to compete for a portion of this money. We're discretionary, we're non-entitlement. The state of New York has a competition each year. This year, the competition requires we submit between now and the end of July. This freestanding program is now part of a larger process in New York State called the Consolidated Funding Application Process. Think of all the various programs in the state now due on one day of the year. That's the Consolidated Funding Application Process. Uh, what we try to do is take advantage of opportunities to solve some of our needs. We've been using this program since 2010 to solve problems related to our public infrastructure. Three of our awards have been for sanitary sewer main replacement. One of our awards was $600,000 to fund part of the replacement of your 30-year-old water tank that you may recall was replaced in the last two years. We've been going after sewer projects for one good reason. There's a consent order hanging over our head like the sword of Damocles. That consent order is open-ended. It was brought against the village back in the early 2002, 2003 period because the aged sanitary sewer mains allowed a lot of infiltration inflow that during heavy rainfalls led to, let's just say, pollution of the Walcott River through inadequately treated sewage. That consent order requires that we make progress each and every year. Failure to comply with the consent order to make progress can lead to $37,000 a day fines. Each, get, each and every year, we have to come up with an idea for what to do, and either fund it through grants or fund it ourselves. The last few years have been very fortunate. We've done projects on Dugnot Street, on Rock, on Mill Rock and Oak. Uh, this year, in about two weeks, starting out here, right out here at Platical Avenue, it's gonna get its sewer main replaced. And we've been keeping ahead of the DEC by making progress. But, yeah, when I say open-ended, there is no roadmap that tells you exactly what you have to do. There's no target to hit that the consent order goes away. They examine your performance each year, they look at the flow of the sewage plant, and they decide, in any given year, what do you need to do next. We're under their controlling effect. This consent order might be resolved in five years, it might be resolved in 15 years. I don't know. But all we can do is keep ahead of the fines and keep making progress. Uh, René Lars, our engineer, and in particular Richard Ruth, has come up with a, the next project that he's run by the DEC. Uh, it is, uh, has the, the working title of 120-day NYS DEC consent order engineer for it. He's proposing to replace sewer mains on a variety of streets. This was based upon televising of sewer mains to find out where the worst mains were, or at the DEC's behest. The DEC, in a letter of May 12th, has approved that work and made it part of the consent order. And René Lars has identified to the village board a schedule that we have to meet to get that work done. The DEC wants that this phase of work completed by October of next year. That means that we need to apply for money now. We get our answer yes/no in December. If it's a no, we still have to fund the project next year. If we do get it funded, we have the money through the grant. Uh, but this type, this timeframe is so tight that I'm recommending to the village board that once we get the application in, in July, that they proceed to have René and Lars do the design and survey work to get ready to be able to bid in the early part of 2016. Because if you get the award in December 2015 and only then start the engineering work, getting ready to get your plans and spec try to get to DEC, you won't hit the October 2016. And from what I can tell, the DEC has no sense of humor about missing their deadlines. So, I'm suggesting that this work scope, which is available here if anybody wants a copy, we've got a lot of copies available. I'm suggesting that this work scope be the focus of our application to the Small Cities Program this year in order to get the money you need to do something you have to do anyway next year. And if we succeed, we get the award in December, and we're spending it next year. Uh, we've been very good about the money we've re, we've received, we spent it all. Uh, we've had, uh, four awards, and we spent all the money except for what we're spending right now on Platical Avenue the next few months. The, uh, we have a good track record with the state in terms of spending money. Uh, there are other sources you can go for these, this type of funding, but they're mostly loans. The USDA is always happy to give you loans, maybe a very small grant. We found that out, and we went to the, to them for financing for treatment plant improvements at the existing water treatment plant. The EFC, the Environmental Facilities Corporation, they got money all the time, but it's mostly loan money again. The, uh, we do a lot of work with them, but again, loans have to be paid back. What we've been trying to do, with the extent that we could, is go after manageable portions of the overall need each year with grants. When we succeed like that, you're not paying it back as, as additional taxes. Uh, in addition to this project, which is the CFA application for Small Cities, I'm recommending something that Richard Ruth brought up. There's a planning grant from the DEC available at the same time, different application, same due date, called the Engineering Planning Grant. The Engineering Planning Grant will lay to, go for up to $30,000 to do things like televising your sent old sewer lines, to find out where the worst problems are. And by knowing where the worst problems at I&amp;I are, you know where you get the most bang for your buck when you replace sewer mains. Ones that are leaking like this sieve you want to replace, they're letting a lot of water in. Ones that are relatively sound, even if they're old, you don't need to replace so quickly because they're not part of the problem. The one, every now and again, when you find, do televising, you find some serious problems where a tree root's come in, or a fractured, uh, pipe is letting in a lot of water. And your problem at the plant is the water coming in, you're trying to treat rainwater, and when that overwhelms your plant, it pops up through the manholes. So, um, that is the project that we're considering. But to cover the other parts of this requirement, this program that we're dealing with primarily, primarily must benefit low and moderate people. We have an advantage here in New Paltz Village. The 2010 census says the village is 58% low and moderate income. You have to hit 51%. This is one occasion where SUNY is a huge help to the village because the demographics are changed substantially by the students. So, it works to your advantage. Anytime you propose a project that has village-wide benefit, it's automatically eligible. You got to compete well, but it's automatically eligible. In contrast, the town of New Paltz, 35% low and moderate income, they don't qualify. Anything town-wide, when I say town-wide, who's the village? Anything town-wide doesn't qualify. Uh, most of the neighborhoods in the town do not qualify unless you do an income survey. Here, we don't have the problem to do income surveys, it's pretty straightforward. You're eligible, provided your project makes sense. So, we have several advantages, unlike some other communities, we have a consent order. That means we tend to go to the top in terms of the competitiveness. We have, um, a serious, we have serious problems that are health and safety-related when things go wrong, such as raw sewage on the streets. Um, we have a project that can be done within two years with that much fuss. And I'm gonna recommend something that was brought up when Jason and I talked to our representative at this, at Albany. They suggested that projects that are ready to go have a big advantage. Now, you, you normally don't want to spend money for engineering upfront unless you have to. You kind of have to, because you've got to get this thing bid early part of next year to hit that October deadline. So, I'm suggesting that the portion of this project, which is engineering and survey, you authorize them to design this coming summer and fall. If you're prepared to do that, I can say in the application that the village is covering that cost if you approve we're ready to go. There really, the word "shovel-ready" has been standing around a lot over the last few years, and it doesn't always mean very much, but this is one case we'd actually have a shovel-ready project, which is a large competitive advantage for us. Um, other projects that are always eligible for the village just to consider because you, we're asking for input, water projects, sewer projects, storm drainage projects, road projects. Um, sidewalks are eligible, but they're not very competitive. Anything that is a public infrastructure need is potentially eligible. But the trick is to find something that's competitive. Each year, they get about 40 applications for this program, they fund about half. Those that lose aren't bad applications, but just not enough money for all of their projects. So, we're trying to stand out amongst the crowd. Going with our strong suit, which is the consent orders worth fairly well for us. So, at this point, what I'm gonna do is open up the public hearing to public questions and comments. To make Katie's job easier, please identify yourself for the record, and I'll be glad to entertain any questions from the village board or the residents assembly tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
One quick question.
Sure.
The Engineering Planning Grant, do you think?
The DEC.
Okay.
Uh, it is the, DEC has the Engineering Planning Grant of the $30,000. You have a local match of 20% or $7,500. Each year, you're being required to do televising as part of the consent order. The thought, the thought here is use their money to do a lot of televising, to get ahead of it, and to pay only 20% of the cost. And that, that would be the basis for, if you ever chose to try to go to EFC to do, solve all your problems at once, you have the roadmap. Again, the problem with EFC is it's mostly loan, sometimes grant. Um, and as long as DEC is willing to work with you a little bit at a time, my recommendation is pick off grants, because if you do it all at once, your taxes go up. That's what I'm saying.
Any other questions?
Do we have the engineering proposed costs?
Uh, for the...
Design and...
For design and survey?
Design and...
You'll find it inherent in here. Uh, Richard goes by street, by street, let's just pass this out. Richard goes by street with project costs, and he does not have a summary where he has the totality of the engineering and survey. Uh, but if you go and add up these individual pieces here, you'll see where he's coming from. Um, looking at page one, you've got engineering and survey allowance for LT Avenue as $17,000. Construction inspection, not affected because that's only after the construction starts. So, if you're looking at the engineering and survey allowance for the various streets, you're summing up $17,000, $6,000, $6,900, and $4,000. Quick and dirty numbers around $60,000 is what, in order to be ready for next spring with bidding, to have the DEC permitting out of the way, you'd be committing about $60,000 of local money to be ready to go next spring when the Small Cities hopefully announces in our favor. Or if they don't announce in your favor, you gotta do the work anyway, and the design is not gonna be wasted. The, what the Blue, Terwilliger, and Richard are looking at is if you're taking that part out of this total project, they might add more sewer main into the project to get back to the $600,000 request. Because right now, if you're taking $60,000 off $590, you're requesting 530, when you can ask for 600. They may add a eighth street, for example, to use up the Aspera Link and Aspera. But the quick and dirty number is about $60,000 is your engineering, design, and survey.
In discussing all of this, and now we know what the engineering is, has there also been accounted for, um, hookups and all those things that are ancillary to the project, which we had to absorb, from Mill Rock Road and Prospect?
I think I recall asking Richard on this project, do we have a repeat of that situation on Mill Rock and Oak, where you have old sewer mains in backyards? And I'm reasonably certain he said the answer is no, that we don't have that situation again.
May the minutes please know?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, wait, you're going by my opinion, if you want a definitive answer, let's ask Richard Ruth from the line.
Okay, let's do that.
Because I'm not representing for him.
No, no, I understand.
Because I, to my recollection speaking, is that, I don't want to go through that again, so, um, I think I asked him, but we should define that once and for all. But keep in mind, those coming to you...
I also stayed on the morning about Scotty Bora.
Even if you have those types of costs, they're not grant-eligible because they're on private property. So, perhaps you would instead want to dump that street rather than take that on. But I understand from Richard, we don't have a repeat of that.
And we'll find out shortly.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just, uh, has Nancy had a chance to review this?
I was just gonna recommend that we ask Nancy's advice on that and, and put that question on our, our next meeting agenda.
Well, for those who don't know, Nancy is our treasurer.
Yeah, really, you have to make a decision. Do you want, when you commit this application, when you submit the application, I should either be saying that we're paying for the engineering and survey between July and December and doing it, or I'm silent on that. Um, if you are gonna be doing, paying for that, then it's important that I say that in the application, rather than you decide later, because I can't, then I could not amend the application and take advantage of that.
Understood.
So, Katie, could you just make a note to get Nancy's advice to the board on this? And thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any last, any other questions? Yeah, Don, please.
Do I, I think I, what I understood you saying was that the $60,000 would not be reimbursed to the board for the rent, and they would get that laid back, because people reimburse themselves?
That's correct, because you would've spent it prior to the award. Its value to you is that you're impressing upon the state that you're ready to go. We lost this year primarily because there were just, there are other more competitive projects, and some of them might've been ready to go. Um, the best way to put it is that New Paltz is not as poorly off as some other applicants in this competition. So, any given year, you might just make it, or you just might lose. Uh, the years that we win, it doesn't matter, we just scrape through, we won. Uh, last year, we lost, and we may have, I was told when Jason and I spoke to the gentleman that we just missed. So, that type of factor, such as being ready to go, can make a big difference. But it would not be reimbursable to you. It would be money spent and not reimbursable because it's already spent before the award.
I'm with our guest, just wanted to...
Okay, yep.
Um, and you're talking about mainly going after the consent order-oriented projects, which makes a lot of sense. Uh, the Environmental Policy Commission that I chair, we may have some grant-writing capacity, so, a researcher who does some, has done some grant work. Is there any reason that the village would not want to explore a couple other, other issues? Would we be competing against ourselves in the same pool of money? Or if we were able to go after a couple of the small things, would there be any reason to consider doing that?
Okay, the, uh, with the Small Cities Block Grant Program, you're going for $600,000, you get one shot at it. There's one application allowed each year. The, that's to OCR. The Environmental Planning Grant, which is, DEC is a separate program, you can apply for that. This book is chock full of other funding opportunities this year, some large, some small. Um, what are you proposing to do?
Well, there was a question from an organization, a local organization, that S2R program grants. I was just wondering if it makes sense to be, if there's any reason we shouldn't be looking at other avenues to take care of other grants besides what you're doing?
Okay.
Would there be any disadvantage doing that, with the...
There is a disadvantage going after small grants. And I've, uh, I was explaining this on various emails. When I'm charging the town $33,750 for a $600,000 application, it's a reasonable risk undercar, because when you win, you win big. When I'm charging $2,000 for a planning grant application, and you stand to get $20,000, is it an effective use of your mon, of your money to pay me to do an application that's not gonna net you very much? So, I become valuable with big projects. When you're looking for $5,000 or $10,000, it's not very cost-effective to have me spending a lot of time on that, because I have to charge for that time. Um, sometimes you may find that it's more effective for you to do it in-house, because this consolidated funding application doesn't get much smaller if you take a bunch of zeros away. It's a, it's still a very substantial application process. This application you did last year, there's 67 essay questions. Some of them are two, three pages long, and I put about 60 hours into your application last year so that it's worthwhile to you to spend that type of money when I'm getting you $600,000 thereabouts. You really have to think seriously when you're looking for $15,000 or $20,000 for a planning grant. My experience with planning grants is they tend to mostly benefit the planners. If I were a planner, I might suggest you do them all the time. I'd make a lot of money. But so often, planning grants don't seem to do very much, except create another plan. Um, what I'm suggesting, I'm considering is this. When you save $1.8 million with your former grants, and you didn't have to pay yourself for sewer projects, why not take a little of that money locally and fund some of your small projects? You know, people have talked about Riparian Buffer. What would that really cost? If it's $5,000 for plants? Buy it, buy it locally, get volunteers, plant it. Uh, when you're talking about rain gardens, why don't you take a little money and build one? See how it works. Um, if they're good, green projects, they should not only be good if you get a grant for them. Maybe should be good uses of public money, so that if we're saving lots of money with these grants, consider taking some local money and just doing these things. Especially if you're only looking for very small amounts. I've heard this Riparian Buffer mentioned a few times, the S2R program. Does anybody put a project cost on that?
We will take it.
Um, you know, you're gonna bring somebody in to come with the cost, uh, to identify the product, what the project is, you're gonna pay me to do the application. If it's not sufficiently large, I'm wasting your money. So, that's what I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be blunt with you. Use services of consultants when it matters. Don't use it just for small things that will recharge you a lot of money, and you may not get much result.
Ariana, do you have it?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, though. I, what I took away from what Don was asking was the idea of whether or not, if we had another person doing volunteer grant-writing work, would it be a hindrance to this application if we also applied? Am I, am I...
Yes.
If we also applied...
The grants were very affordable.
Yeah, it was, yes.
Keep considering.
We're not wanting to end up something like you.
If you've got five projects in at the same time with the Consolidated Funding Application Process, be careful, you get, be careful that you just don't get the ones that are marginal, that you'd be nice to have, and lose the one that you must have, so that they're looking at five applications from the New Paltz. Well, we can fund these three small ones, and you missed the big one. I don't, I don't really know.
Just one more question, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm a little, I'm a little leery about flooding the zone with lots of applications simultaneously. And it's not based on facts, it's based on instinct.
Any other questions for Mark, or about the application? With that, I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've got a few additions to the agenda. One is a letter we have from our village engineer regarding the opinion of probable cost for dam engineering assessment report we have to have done. And actually, that was the only thing on the new agenda I have here.
You know, we have Central Hudson to take advantage of the free audit and LED lighting.
Oh, thank you, yeah, Central Hudson.
And green leaf. We have David...
I don't have any of this in front of me.
Are we putting Gomorrah up, or...
We don't need to take board action, we can just do it. I can, I can just say yes, that's fine.
I think we have to take board action because he...
I checked with Nancy and with Will, we don't.
Oh, are we okay with it?
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, it doesn't bother you?
It doesn't matter, I mean, but we've, I already talked about it longer than it would've taken us to do it.
Um, we have a request from Brogan for training, a planning board and ZVA people.
Katie, why, this stuff should be at the table, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the, regarding, or the, regarding the email from Brogan, Nancy also sent you an email questioning whether or not you thought it was best to wait until after the planner arrived.
Wait till when, Katie?
Till after the planner arrived, whether or not it would be prudent.
So, we're not gonna do that?
Well, we can, we can talk about it.
Also, Will Franklin sent all of you an email earlier today regarding the new appraisal.
Yep. And are we going to set a date, or have you picked a date, Katie, for interviewing?
I do, I would like to, if it's possible, I'm just gonna chew on tomatoes. I was looking to having the interview on 5/26 at 7 o'clock in the evening.
What day is it?
If that's possible, it's Tuesday, it's the Tuesday after Memorial Day, at 7 o'clock in the evening, if that's possible.
7:00, that's fine.
Anything else for the agenda?
Second.
There was no motion yet.
Are you, oh, I thought you...
No, I, I just, this...
Hey, more, okay, I'm moving this next.
Is there anything else for the agenda, or I'll segment it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment, who'd like to go first? Laura's yours.
Sure and sweet. Carol Prior, Plains Road, at 7:00. Um, there've been, there's been no discussion to date of a Plan B. Should the Plains Road wells fail to perform as expected? And would it be correct to assume that this whole contingency plan is to have water chucked in to accommodate the village, the town, SUNY, and the Plains Road community's water needs? Thank you.
Yeah, is anyone here?
Nope.
Okay. Yeah, well, Tom is the one to answer that, and we'll, we'll be discussing all of the water issues publicly, so we'll just answer it then.
Thank you.
Any other, yes, Donna? Any other? Yes, Donna?
In Plains Road, I would like to first express my profound disappointment at last village board meeting, which on the agenda was supposed to be a discussion of the IMA between town and village, and there was no discussion, absolutely none. Not a question, no comment, and I was very disappointed in that. And I also have a question, and that is, um, oh, yes. What is the village's intention as to how you're going to acquire water outside of the shutdown period?
That one is fairly easy to answer. We would be, to my knowledge, using the same system we use now. A combination of the New York City Aqueduct and the four reservoirs owned, excuse me, I'm losing my voice. Four reservoirs owned by the village up on the Long Mountain. So all of this has been a backup water supply for the shutdowns, is what is the point of it, so. So we, we still have those sources available outside of shutdown.
And what you're saying now is that it is the village's intention to go back to that same location?
That's been the assumption throughout this process, yeah. But of course, it's gonna be up to the new, new board, what they choose if you come to him first, yeah. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none. Um, let's see. I know David is here for two agenda items, IGA with the city and the town, as well as a retainer with his firm. Is there anyone else here for something specific? It's a very short agenda. I know several of you are here for the IGA, no, we'll get, we'll get that done first. All right, I'll move the consent agenda first.
Exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll move that we approve the IGA as presented in the, in the, sorry, by the DEP.
Can I make the motion in a form that I've been instructed to by our attorney?
I would draw my own.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I move that the village board approve the IGA as presented in its substantial form, subject to approval by New York City Corporation Council, and subject also to final approval. Fi, I'm sorry, strike the word approval. Final registration. And I further move that the village board approve the scope of work proposed by Chief Engineer Dave Clauser with the assistance of village engineer Brenner and Larios, a summary of which is found in paragraphs four and 7B of the IGA.
Second. Any discussion?
It's a resolution, so it should be your call.
Your call.
Okay.
West.
Well, we haven't, I just wanted to see if there's any discussion.
I'm pregnant, so sorry.
No? Okay, just checking.
As Tom said in his email, I think we're lucky to have something so straightforward.
Yeah. All right, Katie?
I would just take one second, because this might address some of the issue that was raised during public comment.
Okay.
This IGA is to enhance the capacity of the village by dredging the current reservoir system and expanding it by flashboards and improving its management by the ability to pipe water from the uppermost reservoir to the holding pond nearest the treatment plant and to use that in the event of any predicted large water event, which is rain, largely.
Which we need.
Which we need. But as you said, Mr. Mayor, that is to then return to our current system, but relying on improved reservoir system. And then the second element of the current IGA is only to do what any progressive community should be doing anyhow, and that is a serious water management and conservation effort. So we would be getting the support of DEP for a conservation education effort for our village. And those are the only two components of the current IGA.
But I don't think that really answered Donna's question. This is between the village and New York City. Has nothing to do with Plains Road. This is only our part, the village, and within the village boundaries of improving our reservoir.
Yes, I understand.
Okay, so we did.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Any other comments? Katie? Local?
Certainly, sir. Uh, West?
Aye.
Rossa?
Aye.
Raka?
Aye.
Rose?
Aye.
Vaska?
Aye.
Thank you all. And to get David home, I'll move we approve the retainer agreement with Kehoe and Mersey.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, David, you're hired.
Thank you.
Get to work.
Let's see, is there anything else? Is there anyone else here who has anything on the agenda? Just wanna double check. All right, we'll just keep going. Um, number, item two. Yeah, feel free, scatter, go, go home to something else.
Thanks so much.
Take care, David. Discussion of chapter 212 of the Village Code regarding occupancy. I'm not sure what to do with this, since we're a lame duck board. We've got one more meeting left before a new majority comes in, so we, there's nothing we can get done to finish this. What does the board advise we do?
Well, I mean, I, I noticed that some of, a lot of the things that we have requested to be changed were not changed.
I.
So I didn't know.
Was this sent to Will? Is this the right version?
Will, Will was here.
Oh, right.
And you, what you sent at the table was that you wanted to go home, read it all the way through, and then come back to the table to discuss it, so I don't think Will gave you anything new, because he wanted you to be able to absorb it as a whole, because as you were making changes at the table, they affected other parts of it. And so I think that's why he didn't give you a new copy, because he wanted you to be absorb it as a whole.
I think we do not, I think Jason is correct. We do not have time to have a hearing on this and act on it, and there may be other opinions on this.
Yeah.
So I'll move to table for the new board.
Table to June, and leave the new board to add to the agenda or not. I'll, I'll second that. Is there discussion of that?
I, I mean, I think that's very reasonable.
So we're kicking the ball to you guys. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would recommend the same thing for the off-line.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Yes, I agree.
I was thinking that in terms of hiring a consultant.
Did he ever get back to you again? He was supposed to call you, and I don't know what happened to that.
Yeah, I mean, so hiring a consultant.
Yes, at this late, 11th hour.
Yeah.
This does involve money, and there's a lot before the board in the next few months involving money, and they may wanna get the purpose off.
And we've got some spending to do anyway that we have to get done, so.
Right. So we'll move to table back for the new board as well?
Yep, so I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, that's done, that's done. The dam assessment report, do we wanna, this is one of those things that has to get done. But we don't have a memo from Nancy about the state of our water fund, because this is gonna cost us 27, what, $26,859?
I have a piece of, I think, important, just relevant information about this.
Okay, great.
Uh, the dam assessment, which must be done on a 10-year basis, and this is the year in which it must be done, has been included in the, the overall analysis and design of work for the IGA.
Oh, great.
Right.
So in effect, if the IGA is affected by New York City, that is to say approved and registered, then this $27,000 will be an additional saving to the village. It will not have to come out of our budget, even though we will have budgeted for it.
Wonderful.
So maybe that's something we could use for one of those other projects that Mark suggested before.
I think, would it be appropriate to make a motion to have Rich Ruth inform whoever he must respond to about this, that this will be covered by our?
I'm not sure what you mean. He, uh, should this go into Clauser's hands? But Brenner and Larios are the subcontractors.
But my point is, then if they were aware of the IGA and it was already in, why would we send?
Because this was prepared, this was in preparation for a significant period of time.
Right.
In advance of this, and the inclusion of this as an element in the IGA was determined within the last two weeks, I would say, as we came to grips with the, uh, the two components of the IGA.
So I did understand this correctly.
So what you're saying is that?
And I'm saying that Rich Ruth should inform.
The DEC.
State DEC should this.
DEC.
That's right.
Well, that's his requiring that we do this.
Right.
Yeah, that we are, are complying with this, but in, in manner which is compatible with what we must do for Rich.
I, I don't know who the appropriate person is.
Rich would know.
Rich would know.
Yeah, I'm gonna move that Rich is so involved.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, I'll move that we request an audit of our streetlights for LED potential.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I think that we should maybe include something about how we have requested five new streetlights.
We got them, we got them.
On Platte, on Platteville?
Yeah, they were installed, over the years. I mean, we can double check, and maybe, I mean, I got the, the paperwork back, that they were installed, that they were installed. I didn't double check.
I guess I should look specifically at the poles, but I didn't see any new streetlights on Platteville.
I'll check tomorrow.
But, yeah, I mean, I might be.
Well, my question is, we just went through a major routine with Central Hudson
about what streetlights, like the five, that are supposed to be added on Platteville Avenue. We had the audit. Why don't we just approve them to proceed with the LED lighting?
All right, how about we ask if they can use that audit for this, for the purposes of upgrading our lighting, or if they need to do a new audit. And if they need to do a new audit, we go with that, so that we can get the lights. And if they can use the current one, so be it, and maybe we can get the lights soon.
They owe, they owe us for five streetlights that we have already signed up.
I think those were installed.
Just says that they were installed, although.
I believe those were all installed.
Although I, right, I mean, I don't, I don't know of any.
I don't see any difference.
I would have to go look again.
Yeah, they would, they would've been put on existing poles.
Right, I know.
So what do we do? I mean, all we need is verification. I mean, we should be able to have some blue. Should be able to verify for us.
We just can't do it right this second.
Right, right.
I understand, I'm not suggesting, you run outside.
Why not?
I would rather have.
I mean, they are on the street.
I would rather have either blue or an engineer of some sort go out and verify that this work has been done, and then.
Oh, you're talking, you're talking about that.
No, because this is.
This, no, this is, this is a new thing. This is something that.
Granted, but if this is, if the new thing is contingent on the old thing in any way, we should know that the old thing was done.
Why would it be contingent on something else?
I don't think, I don't think anything's contingent, but I, I was thinking that the lights had not been installed yet, and that might push us to the top of this first come, first served.
That's what I was thinking.
Because if the lights had not been installed, and we had made this request in the past.
Were on the list to get lights.
Then, then we'll be getting this type of light, I would assume.
Why don't we move to have Blue contact Central Hudson to ascertain, since we've already recently been flying around looking at lights, does that count as the audit? And yes, we authorize approving to proceed with the LED lighting.
Yeah.
Yes?
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, all right, that was the green leaf.
All right, exactly.
Will Frank?
Do we wanna wait on the, on Brogan's training until David joins us?
Well, when is the training?
I think we had to authorize to allow Mark to do it. Wasn't that the point?
Yeah.
Yes.
To allow, to, to allow it to serve as their training credits for the year.
If they so choose, yes.
I don't see what, uh, you'll forgive me, I don't, I don't see why training for ZBA and planning board members needs to be contingent on the employment done in the year.
I don't think, I don't think it is. I'll move.
I don't think it was, it was in the email. That we had to authorize Mark.
Yeah, no, we're, we're, yes, we're all on the same page on that.
Why should it be contingent on a new plan?
It need be contingent on it, because they have to have training every year, and if they don't, they can get kicked.
So I'll, I'll move we approve Mark Daffy's training as, as per Brogan's communication.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll move we authorize Village Attorney Will Frank to move forward with an appraisal of Peter Bean Suck's property for potential purchase by the village.
They ought to get a friendly amendment.
Yes, you may.
I would like it appraised in two ways. I would like it appraised for that which this board said they would do, which is buy up to 50 acres of additional to the 38 for $450,000, and we approve that. I want that property appraised. If you wanna also add in whatever other people are thinking about, okay?
How about the, the original up to 50 acres, and then the one that's.
The whole.
And the additional 13.
That's.
How about one that's the entirety, and then one that's just 50 acres?
That which the, this board approved doing.
Okay, that is a friendly amendment, so I will accept that. Is there a second?
And I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other business?
Um, we're having an executive session.
We are?
Okay.
What do we need an executive session for?
Um.
Personnel, legal.
Okay, well, then I guess I would like to request an executive session for the purposes of discussing, discussing, um, the.
But I have one other thing.
The purchasing of property.
Okay.
Yeah, and that is, do we want to approve the engine, upfront engineering costs, which are in fact $57,400 after review by our treasurer for the engineering?
Do you think we need to do that, right? Do we need to?
I would do it, because the sooner it gets done, the sooner they can do the drawing, the sooner Mark, the, the application is due July. It takes a while to do that.
So you're saying, you're saying approve it pending Nancy's approval?
And that there is money and that this is.
I, I support that.
Okay.
Uh, so you did, you make, did you make that motion?
Yeah, so.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
So.
Aye.
Aye.
So Katie, can you have her respond to all of us? Yes, yes, I have.
Is that everything we responded to?
I move in, I move we go into executive session.
What about the minutes?
What about the minutes?
I will have everything for you for the next meeting. We didn't have them in time because of the excitement of the election.
While we're talking about minutes, I would love, Katie, if we can have all minutes that are due for the next meeting, because when this board came into session, we couldn't approve three sets of minutes, not, you weren't the clerk, three sets of minutes, because none of us had been on the boards.
I will double check to make sure that you have everything.
So everything up to date, so that the new board has it.
All right, I move we go into executive session to discuss financial matters, talking to people with it.
Purchase projects.
The first.
Second.
Financial matters, what am I thinking? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.